Hi, everybody. My name's Brad Dahl. I'm here with Crystal Mulestein. She is running for Orem City Council. All right, Crystal, your thoughts on homeownership?
Homeownership is the American dream. Our kids didn't grow up playing apartment rental. They played house. That's what we want for ourselves. That's what we want for our children. We want them to have a place to call home. If you drive around Orem, there are a lot of apartment buildings in Orem. And most, if not all of them, have rent today or available now signs. That shows us that a lot of these high-density housing complexes have a lot of vacancies in them. They're not in demand. They keep rental prices high. And then that, I feel like artificially inflates the price of housing even more. So, the demand for housing, single-family housing is already there. Then you bring in a lot more availability, supply of apartments. And you have their prices being high. What's that gonna do to the housing price? It's gonna raise that price up too. So, high-density housing is one of those problems in Orem where we have more than enough. We have over forty-five percent rentals in Orem. The demand isn't there for people to live in it. What they really want is the single-family home. So, we've got to say no to the high-density housing and say yes to the development that will enhance our city. And leave, leave a good place for our children to inherit.
You know, and just to kind of throw in, if I may, a little bit there. Uh, in my neighborhood, well, if you'll ask my ward, in a five-year stretch, uh, we had thirty-five out of a hundred houses change hands.
Yeah.
And almost every one of them was a young couple. In fact, they were a young couple where either there was a baby on the way, or there was soon a baby on the way. And, and the ward went from, uh, being a senior ward to being a, a very young ward.
My neighborhood's in the middle of a transition like that, too.
And, and so things seem to be happening that way right now without this idea of having to have all of this high-density housing that frankly, families don't really want.
Yeah.
I, I agree with you there. All right, so probably the other big thing that's always gonna happen in a city is traffic. You know, and I live on a cul-de-sac off of Eighth East. And I know sometimes it'll take me ten minutes to make a left turn onto Eighth East. And it's very frustrating. I, I would be terrified to think that that would get worse. What are your thoughts on traffic management in Orem?
Traffic is one of the, one of the highest complaints I hear from residents and voters. I've lived here for about thirteen years. And in that time, I could get around easily. When we first moved here, I could get around town easily. I remember being able to make it from my house in northern Orem down to Costco. I could go fill up with gas, do my grocery shopping, and make it home in twenty-five minutes. So, drive there, do all the things I need to do, and make it home in twenty-five minutes. That's not possible now, and most of that's because of traffic. Add in the lines at the gas station at Costco too. Those are a lot longer than they used to be. Um, but traffic has been one of those things where people are feeling like it's becoming unmanageable. It's, that's, that's the, the feeling that they have. That's where they feel like things are claustrophobic, almost, is with traffic.
So, it's becoming unmanageable, which I, I don't disagree with you. How do you, as a city council member, bring it back to manageable?
Yeah.
What are you going to do?
So, because I've been staying up on the city issues and attending city council meetings and learning as much as I can about what's happening in Orem, I have learned about some of the things that our city council has done to help alleviate the traffic. And the first step of alleviating traffic in Orem was to stop the influx of traffic. And the way that the city council has done that was to advocate for Orem to entities like UDOT and MAG and other cities who keep putting pressure on Orem to widen more streets and make Orem a thoroughfare. There were plans from UDOT to widen, sixteen-hundred North is gonna be widened from the freeway to State Street, but there was a plan to widen it from State Street, wrapping around Eighth East all the way down to University Parkway, making that five lanes. There is a plan to widen Center Street to seven lanes, to widen twelve-hundred North to five lanes with a bridge over into Vineyard and what will soon be Utah City. Um, I wanna say Eighth South was on that list. Uh, there were a lot of, a lot of roads that UDOT really wanted to widen in Orem. And their reasoning for doing that was not to serve the citizens of Orem, but to help make Orem a thoroughfare to allow people to get through Orem to their, their own city, whether it's Provo or anywhere else down south, maybe even up to Heber, or north of us Pleasant Grove, Linden, any of those things.
Or, or to stuff people in high-density housing.
Or, and, I mean, that's part of it. So, that's where a lot of our traffic does come from, is from we have more people in Orem, so there are more cars in the road. But the other piece of the puzzle is to make Orem a thoroughfare and drive more traffic through Orem to allow them to get to where they need to go. So, the first step has been to, for the city to look at that transportation master plan and take off projects that do not serve the people of Orem. I am so grateful for the leadership we've have, have in our city that has done that. They have taken a look at a lot of these plans and said, "That doesn't serve the people who live here, so I'm sorry, but we're not gonna do that." Thanks, but no thanks. That doesn't work for us. So, now that that's been done, we can get to the second step, which is pushing other communities to manage some of their traffic a little bit better. Uh, that fairly new Pleasant Grove exit was not, i- it was, uh, too busy from day one. They did not plan for as much traffic as that exit needed to handle from the get-go. So, that probably needs to be redone. Uh, Geneva Road's getting an expansion. That's a great one that's been announced and is going to happen. That's gonna help funnel people up, you know, north and south on a divider between Orem and Vineyard. So, it's not going through Orem City and through neighborhoods. Um, another one is Provo needs another exit. Provo desperately needs another freeway exit. And I know that's a hard choice for their community to make because it's gonna mean, you know, eminent domain and going through neighbor, a neighborhood there. But, is it our job to provide the roads for Provo to get to their homes?
That's a great question. I happen to know that Provo, uh, has a, they've talked about that in Provo, and it will be an epic battle if they ever do it. But yeah, they do need one somewhere between University Parkway and, and Provo Center.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you think about it, Provo-
If not two, right?
It will, Provo has two exits that are Provo's. Center Street and eighteen-hundred South. And University Parkway's in Orem, even though it feeds mostly into Provo. So, yeah, that will be a battle, but you're right. That's not Orem's problem. That's Provo's problem. And, and so I get what you're saying.
And not that we don't want to cooperate with our neighbors. We want to do that. But at some point, we have to say, "We've done enough. We've done our part." And we have to make sure that our city works for the people who live here first and foremost. And I think that residents in Orem are, are starting to feel like Orem isn't working for the people who live here, but for everybody else. So, we've gotta pull that back just a little bit and make sure that our city is working for the people who live in Orem.
And you mentioned UDOT. That kind of touches on another topic that I wanna get to. Um, we have this thing in Orem that I call the E-BRT, the Empty Bus Rapid Transit. Um, that obviously was a choice by Orem City Council years ago to allow that to happen.
Yeah.
Yes, there were a lot of federal grants. It didn't cost us a lot of money. Uh, what are your feelings about BRT? Was it a good thing? Was it a bad thing? What should we do?
The BRT is a hotly debated topic in Orem. Uh, for those who aren't familiar, it's the, uh, bus line that goes down University Parkway and has two dedicated lanes, sorry, microphone, two dedicated lanes, one in each direction just for the bus. Uh, in theory, that's a great idea. In execution, that bus is empty a lot of the time. There are some high-traffic times of day when that bus is utilized. But it's taking away two lanes of traffic all day, every day, to accommodate those few times a day when people do utilize that bus system. There have been talks of doing another bus rapid transit down State Street. And can you imagine taking away two car lanes, two motor vehicle lanes to accommodate a bus down State Street? That would be, uh, if we think traffic's bad now, it would, it would be awful for our city. Not only that, but because of those dedicated bus lanes, it's really hard for our first responders to get across University Parkway. So, imagine doing that down State Street, and our, our city is bisected, and now our police can't, and fire can't effectively get from one half of the city to the other. What does that do to lives that could be saved? Emergencies to respond to, crimes that may be happening? What's gonna happen? I, I think that our, our quality of life will decrease in the city much beyond what a BRT could, could offer, uh, if we go down that road and, and add another BRT system down State Street.
So, I assume if BRTs are known, that light rail, which has also been talked about in the past, is a expletive?
We don't have the population to support that. That's, I, in my opinion, the state is pushing for these bus rapid transit systems to be able to then upgrade to a light rail when the population, uh, gets to a point where it could support that.
But of course, a population get to a point to support that means you're stuffing people in high-density housing.
It means you need more high-density housing, which then goes into the housing and transit redevelopment zones, the HTRZs, that the state, I think it's a law the state enacted this past year, that wherever you have rapid transit, bus rapid transit, or light rail, or, um, front-runner stops, you have to add in high-density housing. So, that should be enacted on, on University Parkway right now. But, Orem City has pushed back against the state on that because Orem had, uh, years ago, um, brought in RDAs to develop University Parkway. And now we've, we've finished those RDAs. We're no longer deferring any tax money from that. We're collecting all of the property tax for those properties, and we're starting to get the payoff from those RDAs. And if we had to enact the HTRZ zones, the housing, housing and transit reinvestment zones on University Parkway and redo all of that business center, not only would it take down our property tax, or, sorry, take down our sales tax revenue and increase our property taxes, um, but all of that RDA that we spent decades investing into would have been for nothing, and it would have been a loss for Orem.
Do you have a message for our state legislature regarding the housing and transit reinvestment zones?
I think that what they're trying to do is, in theory, good, but in execution, it doesn't work for every community. And this is, goes back to what I said about school districts. The closer to home decisions are made, the better. I would love it if our legislature could look at issues and recognize that there, there's not a one sit, bleh, one-size-fits-all approach to a lot of these questions, but we need to be giving power to the municipalities to be able to address these issues better, rather than having a mandate from the state that boxes us in on how we can move forward as a city.
Okay, now you mentioned RDAs, redevelopment agencies. And there's also another, uh, entity like that called a CDA, which is Community Development Agency. And Orem's done quite a bit of both. In fact, their most recent thing was a CDA to redevelop the, uh, University Mall into what's now called University Place.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Now, on, on one hand, it's a lot nicer.
Yeah.
It is nicer. On the other hand, that comes at a tremendous cost to Orem in the form of lost tax revenue. All right. So, your thoughts on RDAs, CDs in general? And maybe if you wanna touch on the University Place CDA, that's, that's okay. Uh, your thoughts on that?
In my opinion, RDAs and CDAs inherently pick winners and losers in business. They allow government to pick the winners and losers. Small businesses can't ever apply for or qualify for an RDA. They usually or always go to bigger businesses. You look at University Place. That RDA wasn't in place for each of the individual stores within U-, uh, University Place Mall. It's for the Woodbury Corporation that owns it all. So, I, I feel like at some point, you have to make a decision as a city. Do we need to attract more businesses to our community? And maybe an RDA is a great way, or a CDA is a great way to attract some businesses to your community. But Orem's at a place where we don't need to do that. We have a great business base. We have so many options available here. We don't need to provide those tax incentives to bring them here. On, not on the other hand, but as an added, uh, thought to that, I look at the Vineyard RDA. And how detrimental that's going to be to our new school district. This was a poorly thought-out business deal that isn't even really defined in what it's going to do and who's going to get the benefit. It's very amorphous right now. And millions and millions and millions of dollars will be funneled away from our brand-new school district and was being funneled away from Alpine School District because of that awful RDA.
All right, so that's, uh, for to sum that up. You're not completely opposed to RDAs, but there has to be a real genuine need and a very clear-cut benefit.
It has to be a win-win situation for the community as well as the business. And a lot of times, these are just beneficial to the business.
Right. And, and the taxpayer ends up footing the bill because obviously, lost revenue has to be made up somewhere.
Yeah.
And so that may be in, in the form of a tax increase or the lack of a tax decrease for Orem residents.
Exactly.
Okay. Excellent. Well, let's talk about one more exciting move that's happened. It was years ago, but it is definitely something that we're still looking at right now, and that's Midtown Village.
Mm-hmm.
Now, Midtown Village is above and beyond high-density housing.
Yep.
I mean, Orem kinda went all-in on Midtown, doing more than just saying, "Okay, go ahead and build this here." They actually, uh, put themselves, uh, a- as a city on the hook for a lot of that. Uh, what would you have done if you were on city council when Midtown Village came up?
It doesn't fit with any of the area around it. I don't know why it was approved. It doesn't really make sense. I feel like since then, they've kind of built some things up around it where it's not quite as big as of, of an eyesore or, you know, sticking out like a sore thumb. It's, it's not quite like that anymore. But because of the history of it, so many people driving by it just have bad feelings about it. Um, and many people who don't even live in Orem have bad feelings about it. I hear comments from people quite regularly about Midtown Village. Uh, A, biz, or city government should not be getting into those kinds of business deals. Again, it's picking with winners and losers. Either it's a good idea and it stands on its own and it can make it work, or it's not. Uh, it was originally supposed to be owner-occupied units too, and I believe it's all rentals now. So, that's another thing that I feel like it's kind of a bait and switch on the city that, "Oh, get involved in this. We're gonna have owner-occupied units." And then the bait and switch happens after, what, almost a decade or more of it sitting empty and half-finished? These are not the kind of things that, that cities should be getting involved with. And I would not have ever thought that was a good idea.
So, it sounds like in general, if, uh, before we get the city on the hook with anything, you're gonna do a lot of diligence to see if that's worth a taxpayer money expense or future obligation?
Definitely. Just as I have to live within a budget and I need to make smart decisions with my money and any investments I make or purchases I make, this, even more so with taxpayer dollars, that would be my, uh, my viewpoint, is this is not my money. Therefore, I, I can't make mistakes with it. I have to spend it as responsibly as possible and think about the long-term ramifications of any decisions made.
You know, that's, that's a great way to think, is, uh, if you're raising taxes, you're raising them on yourself, just like everybody else. And you have to really think in those kinds of terms in order to decide if that's a good thing or a bad thing. I appreciate that. Well, let's, uh, let's move on to a, a different topic now. Uh, and this is interesting because five or ten years ago, and no one even heard of this. But now you've got this whole transgender movement, and you think as a city council member, well, so. But obviously, that's not the case. For example, uh, cities build parks. Parks have bathrooms. And there was actually an attempt in Orem, uh, in one of the newer parks to put in unisex bathrooms where you'd have, uh, men and women, boys and girls essentially in the same bathroom, uh, with locking stalls, or I believe it was what they were gonna do. Um, that got torpedoed, but if that, if that comes up again, what's your stance gonna be on that?
I feel for anybody who, maybe going through any gender confusion or, uh, feeling not at home in their own body. I feel for you. That doesn't change the definition of what a man is or what a woman is. It doesn't change any of that. And separate bathrooms are there for a reason. I wouldn't feel comfortable going to the bathroom in a men's bathroom. I actually walked into a men's bathroom the other day on accident, and it was one of those, "Ah!" Moments that I, you know, I obviously wasn't paying attention. Um, and it was immediately, I felt so uncomfortable. Imagine feeling that way every time you go to a place that has these unisex bathrooms. Imagine trying to send your child in there. So, as a, as a, when my kids were younger, when I had littles, um, we'd be at the park, and I'd, "They need to go to the bathroom." "Sure, go in. Go by yourself." If I were at a park where that was the option, there is no way I would let my children go to the bathroom by themselves. I would accompany them every single time. Or, I would choose not to go to that park. That's quite frankly, probably the choice I would make. It's not that hard to have two separate bathrooms. It's not that hard to provide a unisex, single-stall, single-seat or whatever for, if you're creating new ones. It's still not my first choice. There are men's bathrooms and there are women's bathrooms, and they provide different functions. Um, not to get graphic here, but men's bathrooms also have urinals. I don't need that in my women's bathroom. And I don't need the seat of my toilet to be sullied. Uh, with-
Hey, come on. Some of us lift the lid. I mean, you know.
Very true, but I have two teenage boys, and I know that as much as they try to be responsible, it doesn't always happen.
I, I, I have to admit that is, that's true.
Totally didn't think that was where this conversation was going, but here we are.
Well, and again, more sensitive on that topic, but it, it is something. Orem City runs a lot of sports.
Mm-hmm.
In fact, I had the privilege of coaching my kids in soccer. Now, people say, "You know soccer?" And I say, "Well, I know it better than a ten-year-old." Not a lot better than a ten-year-old, but I know it better than a ten-year-old. Um, I would imagine there's gonna be some very serious attempts to, by some parents, to put a boy who is identifying as a girl on a girl's team. All right. And so, I would assume that, you know, the buck's gonna stop with the city council. How are you gonna handle that when that happens? Cause I, I'm pretty sure it's going to happen.
Transgender sports is a tough topic, and it's one of those things that's foremost on a lot of people's minds because it's in the media a lot. I am of the belief that no matter what gender you think you identify with, men's sports are for men and women's sports are for women. A lot of time, that comes down to safety issues. Uh, we've seen so many issues where women have been hurt and harmed by men playing in their sports and their leagues. And it's not everybody who will come across that, but it's enough that it is something we need to get a stand on and say, "I am so sorry that this is something you're dealing with and that you're trying to find a place where you fit in, but for safety reasons, we need to keep men's sports for men and women's sports for women." Even with little kid's sports, I mean, there are a lot that are, um, co-ed teams for the littles, you know. Fine, keep it that way. That's not a problem. That's not where the, it's, you know, post puberty or during puberty where those issues can, the safety issues come up. And for the protection of our girls, I would stand firm on that. I've had that conversation with my daughter many times. She doesn't really play sports, but the idea that she would have to put herself in harm's way to allow somebody else just to participate is, it, it's, it's a hard thing to, to wrap your brain around that, that my, my safety doesn't mean anything. Um, and I, I, I hate that we have to put people in that position.
All right. One of the great things about Orem that I love is the fact that there are so many beautiful parks. Uh, we, we're close to Sarah Park. There's a couple of great play structures there. There's a beautiful swimming pool. Uh, Center Street has that, uh, new all-access park. It's been there for a while now, but my kids love it.
Yeah.
My grandkids, my kids. My grandkids-
Your kids probably love it for the grandkids.
My kids love to take their kids to that park. Um, and, and there's a lot of nice parks in Orem. Orem, I think, does a really good job, uh, of providing those spaces for people. Uh, what would be your approach on city council to preserve that and maybe expand upon it?
I also love our parks, and I've been impressed with Orem's focus on giving a lot of our parks a facelift in recent years. I live by Windsor Park, and for a long time, that park was neglected and sad. Uh, we got a new playground at one point. Uh, now we just got new basketball courts that were partnered with Utah Jazz to get those new basketball courts. And then the old basketball courts will be turned into pickleball courts. So, Orem's doing some amazing things with its parks, and I'm grateful that they prioritize those because that's a gathering place for family and community, which is essential, I think, in Orem to provide those things, being Family City USA. With that, Orem's come across some situations in which it's had to buy land and turn it into a park. You look at Hillcrest Park. When that school closed down, the city got the first rights of refusal on that property, and they chose to buy it. And they turned it into this amazing park. Have you been to Hillcrest Park?
I have not. Need to get down there.
It's awesome. They have done a lot of really great innovative things there. They've, uh, there's, um, like an off-site library connection there. So, you can, if you put library materials on hold, you can pick them up at Hillcrest Park or return them there, things like that. There's a community center, like a event center you can rent out for like a family reunion. Um, there's just great things going on there. And what, what a great thing for Orem to have turned a closed school into a, a facelift for that neighborhood. Not, not even a facelift. It, it just lifted the whole neighborhood up to put in an amazing park there that people want to go to. That's so great. And with that, we need more parks in Orem. I believe, uh, from the city's parks plan, for a city of our size, we need upwards of thirty more acres of parks and open space for a population and city our size. So, prioritizing that is essential because it's about quality of life. You look at, uh, the recent Wilkerson Farms issue. Uh, if you're not familiar with that, it was a property owned by a guy that, uh, wanted to sell it off, and Wilkerson Farms was, was renting or leasing the property from him. And he chose not to renew their lease, which is fine, but he wanted to change that property into high-density housing instead of keeping it open space. I would have preferred it stayed open space. One, because it was right next to railroad tracks. So, putting housing right next to railroad tracks is just, that's a bad idea in my opinion. Some poor, young, unsuspecting homebuyer is gonna buy a house that backs up onto the railroad tracks, and every time that train goes by, they're gonna be woken up, or they're gonna put a baby down for a nap, and it's gonna get woken up.
It ain't quiet.
It's not quiet. I've, I've been to Wilkerson Farm when it was the Fall Festival, and that, when that train goes by, it almost like rattles your teeth. So, imagine living next to that, right? So, I, I thought that was a bad idea to turn that into housing, uh, because of what is around it, not because, uh, it's single-family housing. Single-family housing is great. Normally, I would be applauding that option. But right next to a railroad track, that is just, that's not great planning. You need a buffer between it to, um, absorb some of that sound, right? So, I, if that could have become a park area, that would have been amazing to have that turned into or preserved as open space for Orem in some way.
Well, Crystal, you know, obviously, the election's coming up here in just a little over a month. It's when ballots will, will first go out. And I'm gonna look at the ballot, and I'm gonna see six names on there. Uh, two of them are incumbents and four of them are newcomers. And, and you're one of the, I mean, you've run before, but you're really not an incumbent. You're a newcomer. Um, why should I, why should I put my mark by your name instead of one of those others?
I think everybody who's running is a good person, and it's not necessarily about who's the better person, but who's the right person for the job. I think everybody who's running is a good person and it's not necessarily about who's the better person, but who's the right person for the job. I bring a perspective that is underrepresented on the city council with Orem being Family City USA. I'm still in that family stage that most of the council members are not in. I have children living at home still. They're all teenagers right now, which is the absolute best. They are so fun. Um, and when we moved into Orem, when I first moved here, they were babies. I had a three-year-old, a one-year-old and a. Four-month-old. We've come a long way since then and Orem's been there supporting our family the whole way. It's been Family City USA. It's been. The community that I've needed. And I can see Orem from that perspective of what it meant to me to raise my family here and I. Can take that and say, this is what we need to preserve in Orem. This is what is important and what we need. To make sure the next generation gets to experience. We have a unicorn of a city. Orem is so great. We still have the kind of neighborhoods where kids can run around and play. They can be kids. They can play outside. And we don't have to worry too much. Yeah, we have to keep our eyes on them and be responsible parents, but. Our kids get to be kids here and that is, that is not common in this world. So I think that my perspective and being so close to and still being in the raising a family stage and having my kids in my home with me. Gives me a valuable perspective in helping to keep Orem as Family City USA and shape policy at the city level. That will affect people now and for years to come. I also have the time to put into this job. Uh I worked as a surgical assistant for a doctor for many years. And that doctor retired fairly recently. And I now have. I have time to put into this that, that honestly, if I had been elected two years ago, it would have been a little bit harder for me to, to do, but. As I've gone to city council meetings and I see all the meetings that these city council members need to go to. Um to represent the citizens of Orem well, to show up for them and make sure that their voice is being heard. Yeah, we have a part-time council, but it's like a full-time job when you see the ones who are really showing up and doing the job well. They are putting in full-time hours and I'm ready and willing and I would be dedicated to do the job in that way. To represent the citizens of Orem to my, the best of my ability by putting in the time that's needed. To attend all of the meetings and be there to represent people. That's, that's the job is to represent the people of Orem. And. I also. Have spent the last few years really getting to know our community. In my time serving on various PTAs, I mean, starting at Windsor Elementary. I've also served at Ok- not Ok- Canyon, Canyon View Junior High and now at Timbinogus High School as well as the Timbinogus Council. I've gotten to know so many. Schools within Orem and a lot of the issues that we have in Orem. Around, surrounding our school age kids and our neighborhoods. And that's really the heart of what Orem is, is these neighborhoods. I, I know the issues. I've been attending the meetings. I don't need to get caught up. I don't need to learn about the issues. I've been, I've been attending meetings, the city council meetings for the past two years. I'm up on the issues. I know what's happening here. I don't need to catch up. I can hit the ground running. And I think there's a lot to be said for that because we're in a spot right now where. Orem's moving pretty quickly on some things and it's amazing to watch and see. How our current city council members are advocating for Orem and the great job that they're doing. They've been doing such a good job. We need to give them another four years. To really solidify a lot of these policies that are changing Orem for the better and I would love to be a part of that change.
Let's have a little bit of fun here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you some questions. He's a rapid fire. Just give me the answer, okay? Your favorite place to eat out in Orem?
Pizzeria seven twelve.
Love it. Favorite dessert place in Orem?
That's gonna be my own kitchen. I'm a really good baker. I make. Everything I make is delicious. I'm not gonna lie. Right now, uh I made this peach dessert with fresh peaches. And um some cookie butter and I. I won't go into details. It'll make you all hungry, but if it's coming out of my kitchen, it's delicious.
Okay, and we'll have to get your address later and we'll be over. Alright, what nobody knows about you?
I have chronic hiccups, so I squeak randomly all the time. It catches people off guard and they don't know what to think.
Now I have to say, you haven't heard the squeak on the podcast, but between takes. We've heard a few of them, so I, I can vouch to that. Alright, where did you grow up?
I grew up in the Central Valley in California, which is mainly farming communities. Um we moved around a little bit when I was growing up, so I didn't. Grow up in any one town. Um, but yeah.
So you escaped it before Newsom destroyed it?
Yeah, I mean, it was, in the Central Valley, it's very conservative. It's, it, it's a farming community.
Farm people know reality. That's a, that's.
It's a great place.
Alright, your favorite band?
Weezer.
Now, I've been involved in politics quite a bit and I have run the gamut of uh elected officials. There are some that you call them, they answer their phone or they'll call you back. Or you text them, they text back. There's some who frankly, I don't think they know where their pickup button is. And they don't know how to text back. So I'm gonna ask you now, as a, as a candidate and, and as a council member, Muehlstein. What's your policy about connecting with your constituents?
One of my favorite parts of campaigning has been talking with the residents of Orem. I've knocked and talked in neighborhoods all over Orem and hearing. Hearing the perspective of citizens all around the city is, is great. I love being able to connect with people that way and it, it teaches me what is on their minds and I would love to continue that. If I get on the council. One of the things that I love about it is. Sometimes people are upset when you talk with them because you ask them, hey, what's, what is concerning you in Orem right now and they get. They get upset. They get, they get mad, but when you can stop and have a conversation with them and connect them with a resource that can maybe help them with that issue. You can solve problems pretty easily just by helping people understand. And know what resources are available to them. I have loved that part of campaigning and so if I could be able to do that on the council. My cell phone number is out there. You guys have it. Look it up on the website. It's there. Eight oh one six six zero five thousand. It sounds fake, but it's real, I promise.
And if we do this right, we'll actually put that up in text. Podcast, so you can actually, if you're watching this, you'll see the number on the screen. Do you have a website that uh you keep up?
Crystal for Orem dot com.
And what email?
Crystal dot Muehlstein at gmail dot com. That one's harder to spell, sorry guys. Or you can do crystal for Orem at gmail dot com.
That's okay. My last, my last name's three letters and people still can't. Anyway, I, I get that.
You know, and I would also love to have like meetups in the park with people, you know, around the city at different parks throughout the year. Just let people come, maybe bring popsicles or something and, and talk to people, talk to the residents of Orem. Hear what's on their mind and what is concerning them in their neighborhood because what's happening in my neighborhood might not be what's happening in somebody else's neighborhood or. Might not be concerning to them. So keeping a pulse on what, what the issues are in our big city. We live in a bigger city. We have almost a hundred thousand people. That's a lot of people. That means there's gonna be varied. Interests and concerns and problems and whatever and, and wins. And so let's, let's make sure we're connecting with all of them.
So you really want to be an accessible city council member? And I'm assuming that if, for example, maybe after a city council meeting is done, that you might be willing to stick around and, and talk to people. As long as there's people to talk to?
Yeah, I, it depends on, this is something I've noticed from attending city council meetings. It depends on if they have a closed session afterwards, which a lot of times they do. Um sometimes they have to go into a closed session meeting that isn't available to the public. But if that's not happening one hundred percent, and please come talk to me. Please come ask me questions. Please bring your concerns to me. That's, that, that's my job. That's what I'm here for. As a candidate and hopefully as a city council member, my job is to listen to your concerns so that I can have the information I need to affect change on your behalf.
Okay. Well, everybody, you've got Crystal's cell phone number. You've got her website. You've got her email. If you got a question. I hope you'll get it to her. I hope you give her a chance to respond. I think she really wants to hear from you. And if nothing else, uh she's on the ballot. Her, her name will be very easy to pick out. And uh give her a look. Thank you.
Thank you.